Call the meeting to order, it's five thirty P M. If we can do role call please.
First time. Is absence Bluch?
Here.
Hugwens.
Here.
Mead?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Swanson? Absence? Dan Wegman?
Here.
Present.
Alright, uh did everybody get a copy of the minutes? From last, uh last meeting?
Yes.
Any corrections or questions with regards to the minutes? Hearing none, if I can get a motion to approve minutes?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Motion by me second by Wegman. Bluch?
Yes.
Hugwens.
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Wegman?
Yes.
Okay, minutes are approved, moving on then to new business. First item on the agenda is. C B A two zero two four dash zero zero eight. That's designer review for approval of a five hundred and fifty six square foot addition. A new life tabernacle church located at fifty four hundred Reimer Drive.
I can kick it off with a staff, uh staff report. So for the fifty four one four Reimer Drive north, uh the new life tabernacle church, they're looking to put. A. An addition off the rear of their meeting hall area. Um, this is looking to be to 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 house a kitchen and restroom area for the meeting hall, there's currently no restrooms in the facility at this moment. Um, so they just wanna put a kinda little bit of a breezeway and then kinda branches out into a smaller. Um, addition off the back. So. Uh, the proposed plan meets all the zoning bulk standards of the district. Um. And the proposed addition meets all the design requirements and is compatible with the existing style of siding. Um, the regular siding and then there's some shake siding above the windows and below the windows on the existing building. And they've matched that on the proposed addition. Um. It wasn't clear the color of the siding, but we've just added a condition in the staff report. That it has to match what's on the existing building. Um, and then we looked on Google, what was that?
We do have these, uh we had, that would be here Sky, he did bring in siding. So we do have siding for the, for our uh ever to see as well, the tan like. Yeah.
Classic linen.
What is it called?
Classic linen.
Classic winning, linen siding colored, and then we also have the uh shingles as well.
Timberline, yeah.
Perfect. Um, so yeah, we just had that as a catchall kinda condition in the staff report too, just to make sure it all. Kinda coalesces together and then. We did a Google Street View. Look as staff, we saw that there's a dumpster enclosure in the front yard. Now that's not, um. Those are prohibited, however, it's, looks like it's been existing there for a, for a reasonable amount of time. We just wanna see that, um. Resided from chain link to something else, putting at at least some slats or something.
Alright.
That it sounds like, it sounds like the uh, the church actually heard that and took steps already to. Um, rectify that, so again, that's just kind of a catchall in the staff report now as a condition.
And typically we have photos of that as well, I can show the members. They've been very prepared tonight, so we've got the. I have to conclude it, so I do have photos of that to show as well.
Yeah, so. Staff recommends approval with the conditions of the color of the material and the resetting of the dumpster enclosure.
Alright, is the applicant present then today? Alright, if you could come up and please state your name.
I'm Pastor Becker Giles. I'm the pastor of the church. Passion builder.
And your address?
For uh the church address or my own address?
Your address.
Okay, sixty six forty three Tipperary Trail, Roscoe, Illinois.
Okay, and um. Please explain the project?
Okay, so what we ha- we've had, we used to have a food pantry. There's a large one in through this building. And uh, it got to be too much. Uh, with uh, it just kept growing, you know? And uh, we just, I and my wife, right? And uh. It just got too much for us, so we did have to abandon that, even though we had done it for about ten years. You know, but uh, the building had already been all fixed up, you know, for that because years ago when I bought the land. And then uh through the county, I re- refurbished the whole building one hundred percent. And uh, from there, you know, now, because. Uh, we have, you know, our meetings there, you know, fellowship meetings. Okay, potlucks, really what it is, you know, mostly. And uh, and I do weddings and funerals. And I'm gonna offer this as a recension, save costs for. You know, I, any of my parishioners or somebody to come by that we know, family members and stuff that just need. Me to do the funeral and I can offer this because I will have bathrooms and a kitchen, cause we, you know, otherwise it's going across the driveway. Which was, was okay with the health department. They, they okayed that, you know, because of, uh, you know, all the volunteers and stuff that I had. And uh, but I know when I bought this property, I was, I was told by the county that I could not put bathrooms. In that building, you know, couldn't run water sewer to it. So that's why we have to do it in the back. So the corridor in between is, it's a corridor, not that the breezeway, but he has designed a corridor for me, you know, so that. And it comes within a half an inch of the existing building. You know, because it's, cause that will have a foundation, the other building has plumes. Okay, so that's, that was a difference, that's why we had to disconnect the two. You know, but I'm, I'm making it look nice, so it looks like it all belongs in one sense. You know, but uh, and the project is uh. Well, it's a whole lot more costly than what I had expected, my first artist at the beginning of the year. Had a board vote on it and the board decided that, ah, we need to spend our money towards that. And so, you know, but we're gonna, we're still gonna, you know, we're, we're doing all of this, but it's. Uh, I just, I just, I'm. I'm, I need to get it done before winter, that's, that's my thing, you know, cause I, I. You know, I think I have a big meeting planned after, in February, and also, which I've already made promises to.
Alright, it's on here, um, the color selections, are those trying to match the existing?
Yeah, this is, this is all that, cause I saved the siding, but this, it's all gonna. You know, this is menards, so I just, you know, order what I need for that and this, and then the cedar sheik, we already have. Uh, so.
Alright, and uh, what about this structure for the dumpster, I heard you talking about?
Yep, I did it all, I did it, cause I was told about it and, and, you know. It kinda baffled me in a sense, I, I, I'd have to admit, because. Cause there's not a dumpster area that meets code, you know? So I said, well, why mine, but then again, this is a site improvement. You know, what I'm doing here. And so I said, just, you know, it's like the Lord spoke to me, says, just do it. And so I said, alright, I'm just gonna take the money and I'm gonna do it, so yeah, that was a six foot and then it's got the doors, you know? Uh, the other enclosure I did after the parking lot was put in, I did it, cause I had a different one there, and I did, I did. I did it with chain link because I didn't wanna have any maintenance problems. Okay, but they only come to the barely the height of the dumpster. And I didn't put doors on it because I like my dumpster to guide to come right in. And dump and then go, okay, without me being there. But now, of course, I got doors, so I will open the doors, I'll pull the dumpster out for, and I still don't want him to have to get out of this truck. And they have to do that, it's a, a lot anyhow, you know, but I don't want, so the door is open. You know, of course, it looks like this, but the door is closed like. This is. You know, this is kinda work I do, just cause I'm, I'm a home improvement, so this is kind of, you know, I can do this stuff and. And uh, that's what we're trying to save the cost.
Understood.
Yeah, right.
Does anybody have any questions?
I do.
Yes.
Right, so you're putting a bathroom in, and this is the first time, do you have two bathrooms?
Two bathrooms.
Okay. So, do you have approval to put a well and stuff again, or are you connecting somewhere?
Oh, we have to connect to the city.
Okay. So, as long as sewer. I was unclear.
Yeah. Yeah, because they would not let me connect up to my.
They can't connect to the back.
Yeah, well, to the front row, yeah.
Okay.
Right on Reimer. Yeah, yeah, the water's already there, sewer, I don't know what they. They're not there, okay. So that's, yeah, that's, cause I, I would, I would have hoped that I could have connected to my building, but when I bought the property, it kept them separated. Just as a, you know, a way future thing, if I had any problems, I needed to sell off something. It, it'd be already separated, that's why I never annexed two together, they're both uh, property tax exempt though, they really are, you know, okay? I did do that, and uh. Also, yeah, I built it under six foot, you know, which I didn't really want, cause I got a four foot dumpster, less than a four foot dumpster, whatever, right there, you know? But it's high, and cause it, it blocks my, the dentist over here. You know, because I'm always looking at his parking lot, you know, looking at his building and stuff, where I'm at here looking across, I like to keep things low because. You know, people hide behind them, you know, all that kinda stuff. But we have security cameras everywhere, so we're, we're, we're all set up for that too, cause. You know, we've had our problems too, you know, I tell you, everybody, I got, I have security cameras nowadays, you know, to keep track of everything, people coming and going.
I saw the. In the packet about the garbage enclosure, I was curious, so I drove over there today. I can attest to it, it's one of the nicest garbage enclosures that I've, I've seen, and so.
As soon as that dries, the wood dries, it's gonna be, it's gonna be stayed a dark gray. Okay, it ends up, it's pretty much colors, gray in the, that, you know, so. It's, cause I don't like it, just, I didn't wanna wood box sitting out there, because if I didn't do that, that could, it was like somebody dropped off a box. And it's, and we're leaving it there until it rots away, you know, so I did that just to say it's not a box. It's a dumpster.
But it looks really good.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Alright, any other questions? Alright.
I'd like to say that I've been here for, I've been at that location for twenty two years. And I don't know if you ever knew what the location was like before, I had bought it. It was just that one front part building there, it was an old. Well, it was commercial property, it actually was years ago a saddle shop. You know, when I bought that, you know, then I remodeled all of that. Because I had a place, if you know where the White House is, uh, what's, what's called the Whiteout next to the Wayman, down here, down two fifty one? You know where Wayman is? Yeah, well, that's big White House, that was my church right started. And then I, that was a land contract through Clayton Andrews. And uh, when, you know, and I paid him off, took me nine years to pay that off. When I paid it off, I said, I done moved into town, I said, I'm out here next to this dump, cause it smelled like a dump most of the time. You know, but I, I did double my money, you know, because I fixed it all up. And so I was able to buy this property here in Roscoe. That was like, um, well, twenty two years ago, it was ninety five thousand then, you know, just for that. Which was, you know, prices were high, I, I, it's commercial property, you pay that, you know? But then I, when I got it all paid for and, and that time I'm not with the village, and they said, you, you're gonna have to have a parking lot. I said, I have every intention of having a parking lot, it's one of my dreams, you know? And I said, but I have to have time, because the other property took a year to sell it. You know, so I had to wait that year and pay the property off, I had enough money to, to start putting down a parking lot, which I did, you know? And then we got all that paid off and then. Uh. I said, well, you know. We really need a real church building, you know, really nice, combined, it's really nice inside, cause I, I'm that type of person, see, I'm. I'm trying to do the community good, you know, I'm not adding to the criminal element of this town, you know, because. Not selling liquor and drugs and everything else, you know, I'm trying to do the betterment of everything, cause actually my.
Yeah. Be an actual air gap between the.
No, there's not, and it's, it's considered an unheated space. Which is kinda consider okay, cause there's no heating technically. And there's no dust going to it, it's just light, you know, but yeah, no, it's, yeah. So that's what uh, Steve Gerard. At Winnebago told me, cause we had to talk with him and he's, and he finally agreed, okay, you can do this. This is as far as it can go, happen within the building, you just seal it off with whatever, but it can't connect. As far as being permanent, you know?
Alright, well, thank you very, very much, we appreciate it.
Yeah.
Alright, um, any discussion?
Oh, yes.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Alright, uh, does anyone have any discussion? Not anyone wants to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Alright.
I'll second motion to approve.
Alright.
Motion by Wegman, second by Smith.
Alright, any discussion? Okay. The voting?
Um, Hugwens?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Wegman?
Yeah.
Bluch?
Yes. Alright, motion passes. Thank you very much.
So, where do I go from here though? I mean. Uh, cause the Winnebago County is waiting to.
People issued, we'll, we'll send them their permit tomorrow, so when you open them, you're showing your permit, and then you'll be good to go, you'll be able to get that from them tomorrow.
Yeah, cause I have everything outlined over to them.
Yep.
You know, they said they have to wait for you guys.
Yep.
But you're gonna send it over.
Tomorrow morning, we'll send that to them tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So much. Alright, and then under new business number three, discussion review of current regulations relating to section fifteen dash five five five. Private solar energy collection systems.
Yeah, so for this one, we got a. Zoning permit application in probably three weeks ago. For a ground mount solar system in the village that technically met. The vast majority of the zoning bulk standards. It's that there was, there's a. Um, condition in the zoning code that there needs to be a fence uh, along the adjacent property line where the solar collection. Uh. Structure is. Well, we only allow up to six foot high fences, so this effectively. Puts the maximum height of a solar ground mount system at five feet. Cause it needs to be one foot less than the fence height. So. We currently, we've gotten a variance application for this. From uh, the applicant that we'll see probably next month. But. Joe and I kinda had talked through, we probably should kinda relook at. How we're regulating some of the ground mount solar. Energy collection systems. Um. And. Maybe if we wanted to allow uh, more flexibility, if. Uh, your property is significantly larger or you're in a less dense zoning district with a larger lot size. Uh, or things like that, so I think the question really. Uh, I wanna ask here, cause we might do a, drafting some sort of text amendment maybe. Uh. The question I wanna ask is. Does that seem like a good kinda uh, measurement uh, to go off of, like? If you say you have an acre and a half, can you go, ca- can we waive that fence requirement? Or if you have um, an acre and a half, ca- can we go up to X high? Uh, of an accessory structure for the ground mount solar, or that, or at that point, do we just consider it an accessible building? So. Uh. Yeah, I think the fir- just for, just first, does lot size or the zoning district seem like a good? Uh, way to measure that for giving flexibility?
It's really what you think about, you know, the ground mount solar. Uh, systems, cause right now, I think our code is, it seems like, as we're looking through it, it's not how we're looking through it, it seems like it was probably set for just regular subdivisions. And that, I guess that's a question for you, for all of you is. Um, for a regular subdivision, it does require a five foot fence, panel lower, or a six foot fence or a lower solar panel. Um, we can change that portion of it, we can change it and say we're great with anything, I think. The intention of the original one is probably so there was no glare, there was no, a little more. Hispanic uh, protection on that, I think. Um, and then like say, we have bigger properties. Do those, should those be exactly the same requirements, are those things you want all fenced in, are those things that we're okay with a little more or a little wider? It's really just a discussion to see what your thoughts are on. On those ground mount solar systems, these aren't, these would be for the ones actually on the ground, not the, the roof ones.
Then they're currently allowed with a fence?
They're currently allowed with a fence, um, for, uh, to a maximum, essentially to a maximum height of five feet to the solar panels. Which we found as we plucked different contractors who've come in, and I think next week we'll have, probably next month we'll have somebody here request that. Where that may be sort of a minimum size. Um, they're requesting for a, a larger solar panel, he's got a larger house, he's trying to be, you know, bring a line of electricity into his house, but through that. Um, and he's not able to do that through our current code, so he's asking for a variance, cause he has a larger property. Um, so rather than suing variances for those. We wanted to talk to you about, is it something where you'd be okay with seeing those on larger properties, or maybe what size property? Um, it depends up to you, I think the one, the one coming up is public, do you know other not fans?
I can.
It doesn't matter all that much, but. It's over acre, or it's probably acres, I think.
It's, yeah, one sec here.
How, how do they want it?
Uh, right now, it's at, I think the peak height is fifteen feet.
Oh, so the fence would be sixteen feet?
If you, if you require a fence side. Sorry, correct.
What do you think back to, uh. TV dishes, satellite dishes, it's so weathering, it's so ugly. And I like solar panels, but on the roof application. I don't think going super high with a solar panel and no fence is an attractive thing.
Right. Do you, do you catch more sun at fifteen feet as opposed to six feet?
Right. I think part was at the actual size of the panel, because every angle has to be on it, I think that was sort of issue too.
Must be big, yeah.
Yeah.
Was it fifteen feet or is it, was it that high for the maximum amount?
I th- yeah, I think it was, I think at the max tilt, it would have been, you would have been able to see it at fifteen, uh. It would have been fifteen feet, th- thirty degrees or something.
So the discussion is.
It's the same twice, but it's not, right, yeah, so that's why.
Yeah, they look small in a wild done Perryville, they're certainly not that high, and that's a big solar barn. Fifteen feet.
Is there trees or something that might be?
This, yeah, well, for this specific property, we'll have a variance, I think in front of you for this, the exact property, so we'll be able to make that discussion about that. Coming up property, I think this is just overall, just getting your, I mean, you may have a good point with the satellite dishes, is there a height that you'd be okay with, is there? A farther have a way from the property line you'd be okay with, you see it out there, is it? Would you rather have a taller fence, would be okay to have a taller fence around it, I guess that's what really what this discussion is, we're asking. You know, just for your input on this, see if there's even something we wanna start figuring out for a, for a text amendment on this. Um, just cause we have this one come in and we have other ones in the future, but. We're sort of looking at, so I think this original one is. It makes a lot of sense for our regular subdivision, right, so normal ninety foot lot, just a regular, you know, subdivision. Um. And so the question is, when we have these bigger parcels, if we do have in Roscoe, we have some bigger parcels, including, you know, farmland, we've got, um. Even larger, sort of estate sized, right, places. Is there some sort of? Changes or something you'd be okay with on those bigger parts?
It'd be interesting, you know.
Is that the issue?
I think it'd be interesting to know is, okay, so if you have a fifteen foot solar panel. Could you do two seven and a half foot solar panels and get the same amount of solar? If you have a bigger lot, it wouldn't have to be so tall necessarily, because you could go, I don't know, I just feel like a lot of this gotta be fixed by case basis.
Okay, in the village is high. I mean.
Yeah.
It's just too much, I think.
I don't think anyone wants to see taller fences.
No.
That's for sure, but structures beyond it. I guess, worried about as low as, they're not like right up.
Well, you're appreciative of what they are, but they're not attractive, even on the roof, they don't look green. But at least it. Blends. You got vegan yard, I'd be afraid of that. Just other people wanting it, cause it's gonna lower your utility bills and that.
I guess there's, there's not a lot of verbiage in the current one about. Setback, kinds of dimensions, right? Oh.
Um. I think it has the art of that, but I think it's essentially it's kinda below that baseline, so you would, in the current code, you wouldn't see it. So you, I mean, would be behind a fence, it's required to be behind a fence, I guess everybody would be required to be a foot below like the fence, so you probably wouldn't see it.
So the variance that they're looking at, is this for the height? Of the panels or the height of the fence, or what are they actually looking at for?
For next month when they come there, I believe what the request is, is to have a variance, either, either one honestly, but they're requesting either not have the fence at all. Or you'd be able to have a lot, larger.
Since that, I, solar panel, I can't believe they were even thinking about putting a fence up. Fifteen feet?
Yeah, I think that.
All of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think so, but they're really.
I don't, was it fifteen feet though, I don't know that is.
Uh, on their, on their permit app, uh, it says, here I can. To be sure my screen here.
I guess just, well, he's looking at, at that, realizing for the purpose of this discussion, this is just in general. Actually, exact variance, uh, onslaught.
Right, right.
But yeah, this would be. The satellite dishes is good, same solar, right?
People have been into things like this.
Right.
And they look like junk, and that's my concern about it.
The technology changes in a couple of years.
Yeah, it says, it says a building height of fifteen feet on here, Joe.
Yeah, so you had since.
But we don't have to address that today.
We're just talking about.
Yeah.
Yep.
What would you, it's more, what would you like to see as like a? Not through the variance process, like what would be a good guideline for? Solar ground mount systems on larger lots, cause. Um, not that I wanna keep referencing the variance application, but this one is almost four acres large. So maybe something over two acres, you might be able to have a little bit more flexibility, but. Uh. I'm just trying to get maybe kind of a, a grasp on, would you want it to be maybe lot size based, zoning co- zoning district based? Uh, it sounds like you guys are leaning more towards lot size. Because zoning, zoning district, zoning district, you could have, you could have a low density. Um, zoning district that's in a subdivision that has. That if you gave them more flexibility, it might be less attractive, but if it's on a larger lot. With the same district, it. Will be la- it'll be seen a lot less and it'll be um, less visible and maybe a little bit more tucked away.
What are other communities doing with regards to this?
Um, the ones I looked at, they're. Taking more of a lot size approach, like I just mentioned. Um, a lot of them are treating. Solar ground mount systems as accessory structures, so they're, they don't have like a totally separate. Um. Subcode section like we do. Um, so if we treated it, if we treated it like a. Accessory structure, let me look to see what the maximum height would be. Um. So the maximum height of an accessory building in R one is twenty feet. So I mean, that's a lot more, that's a lot of flexibility there, um. I don't know if. I don't know if we wanna go that route, I think maybe just go in, keeping it separate, but. Um, providing a little bit more flexibility based on lot size. Is probably the direction I think that would be most uh, kinda sufficient. But. This is more to get your, your, your general reaction.
Is there that many ground mounted solar? I mean, I, like you said, there's most of them that you see her on the road, but you think there's gonna be a lot more?
More of them, as we get these community solar, um. Spots around here, we got three, about three or four of the community sized solar, which are the, you know, those little solar fields you see where they build. There's one guy coming by, um. Uh, here coming around, we got one by Allworld, I think if people are seeing those, and I think knowing that those are another thing they can do. I think maybe you may see more of those.
Maybe they think if they put a fence around the lower one, it would be more attractive than actually putting it on the roof, maybe if they can hide it that way.
And, you know, you mentioned hiding it, maybe it is a issue of screening, you know, maybe there's some other optional, options for screening. You know, in addition to the fence, I mean, that's something too, as opposed to having a large fence, I think. It was, this is the one coming up, but I think the one we're looking at next month will probably have, I think has trees surrounding it. Um, and so it's one through one spot where it's open. Open to the sky where you can do it, the rest of the lot is surrounded by trees. So in that case, you probably wouldn't see it from the road, you wouldn't see it from neighbors, only from his property. So the question is, you know, maybe it's a screening issue, maybe it's, I, I don't know, it's just different options you look at, if it's.
Yeah, I think the screening would be, I mean.
But it seems like the issue is the water, right?
Right, that's the problem.
It's supposed to be the consensus.
That tall. I, I mean, if I lived in the village, which I do. And I looked out my back window and saw one of those at fifteen feet tall, I wouldn't be happy.
Yeah, and what does the glare look like on something like that?
And what do you have to do? And what do it mean?
But Evan, when you talk about lot size having a, a role in this. Where we're really talking about like, the bigger the lot, the more setback from the property line you have to be, or?
What I'm kind of envisioning is with a larger lot. Um. You would get more flexibility in the height of which your. Solar ground mount system could be at maximum tilt, so thirty degrees. That's what I think would be the flexibility, but maybe we add a condition in there. About setback and say, well, if you got, if you have this flexibility and you have this large of a lot. That means that with this flexibility, you can put it further back as well.
Right. But if I've got four acres and you tell me fine, you can put up a twenty foot structure and I put it right on the property line along my six foot fence.
Right, yeah.
If you have four acres, you want that twenty foot structure in the center of it, right?
Yeah, as far back as possible.
I just feel like something like this might just be best on a case by case basis.
So too.
So that you can see specifically what's gonna happen.
People's ideas on this are gonna be something different, it's not gonna match where we have to. Give everybody their way with it.
Okay.
You may have neighbors who aren't happy about it.
I'm wondering if there's a, if there's a way we can make it not a variance, but more of a. Yeah, it's kinda, yeah, something that will, something that we can review here, because if we. Issue variances, that could open up the door. You could legally interpret that to mean other things as well, so if. We say, oh, well, we'll give you a variance to have a larger solar collection, uh, ground mount solar collection system. Based on the size of your lot, then who's to say, I can't come in with a shed permit that's. Twenty-five, thirty feet tall or something, and then say, well, I have a big lot, I should be able to have it. So opening up, granting of legal variance to something, it can open up a lot of different pathways for things that are. A little unforeseen, um, so I think making it something like a special use. Or something that just has to come before ZBA period is probably a better way forward if we wanna do it case by case.
Yeah.
Sure anywhere we go, look at a fifteen foot solar panel? Anybody ever seen one?
I think if you. By people that go are coming on Allworld ones. I think those are, those are fairly high up, those are all ones, so maybe you'll look at Allworld and see. I mean, I can figure out that height for you and let you know that was actual height, sorry, you have the application from before. Uh, but yeah, that's probably, those are probably towards the higher end.
They're sitting out on a highway, so.
There, it's different, that's where they all should be.
It must really, yeah. All right. Anything else? All right.
That's good.
Thank you, all right, any old business? Any public comment? All right, hearing done, I'm gonna motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a second.
Motion by. Ruth, I can find me. Um, Need?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Wegerman?
Yes.
Luge?
Yes.
Hugwens?
Yes.
All right, meeting adjourned.